Now, grandbabies now, children of, uh,
These offices.
Really older now, but they've got their children that are older. Now we got a grandbaby, but they're so small now, we're looking for the time for that. Enjoy having all the presents.
Yep.
The youngest is three months, almost two and a half months. Yeah, that's our great-grandfather, his name is correct. And then we have Leah, just turned three, and her brother, later, who just turned one on December.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Mine's cold.
I don't know. It's a version. Yeah, I got a chance to base it.
I know, it's gonna be like seventy degrees tomorrow, and I was supposed to drink for like three days. It's like, oh, they just wasn't married. It was eight degrees that first night in my house, and my insulation, I had my ears, which is probably because it's warm. It was cold, not used to it.
Of course. Needs to be some road trips, they come here, go there, and we'll get all those details.
What's that? Well, 'cause you never know, if you get out of here, it might have been a far, it'd be cold.
It's still this wintertime.
Yeah.
So you were gonna be just fine.
Yeah.
Right, right, right.
That's full of kids.
Yeah. Well, it is, it's a special, it's a truly, it has to come together, family celebration. You know, the matter loses its perspective.
Yeah, gotta go back out there, probably like four or next meeting. After a while, I just got a good flight today. Well, it's pretty, it's really cold spot going, going like around this farming area. So it's like, it's like all farmers, little Ivan.
Ready? Welcome to the Caddo Parish Planning and Zoning Commission for the December twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two regularly scheduled meeting. We will start with the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And the invocation will be given by board member, Mr. Damon Humphrey, and a pledge will be given by board member, Phyllis Hart. If you would like to participate, please stand.
Phyllis Val, Heavenly Father, we thank you, God, for being so merciful and so kind to each of us. Thank you for bestowing your love upon us and your passion towards us, my Lord. We honor you, we worship you, and we adore you. In all of your majesty and your splendor, we thank you for the opportunity to celebrate, my Lord, Christmas, the greatest gift that you have given unto us, your beloved son. And, my Lord, we ask you, Father, that you continue to keep us to be able to see this new year and do great things for this community in which we live. We thank you, we praise you, and we adore you. In all of your majesty and all of your splendor, it is in Jesus' name we pray and we ask good all. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, board members. All right, I'm gonna do the opening remarks from the chair. Looks like we haven't had one person in the chamber. Again, welcome to the regularly scheduled public meeting of the Caddo Parish Planning and Zoning Commission. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comments on an application, we have PZC comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium down here in front of me. For future notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. Please state your full name, your mailing address, and your zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order and hear from the applicant first, then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak and rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on the agenda. Please note that when the board is in deliberation, members of the public are not permitted to comment. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decision on a particular case by contacting our office at three one eight six seven three sixty-four eighty after one PM tomorrow, or by accessing our website at shreveportcaddompc.com. For consent agenda items and other agenda items not requiring a public hearing, public comments can be made upon request by filling out a MPC comment slip. If comments requested for a specific agenda item, the chair will offer an opportunity for those comments prior to the commission taking action on the agenda item. All of the, excuse me, Caddo Parish Planning and Zoning Commission recommendations are submitted to the parish commission for a final decision. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact the governing board about their procedures as related to the matter that you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway to this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off all cell phones while the MPC board is in session. The commission values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. Thank you very much. All right, I think that then takes us to a special conversation here that we need to have in the chamber and bring Mr. Bernstein in here, is the election of officers that we would like to take on today. So, Mr. Bernstein, I'm gonna give you the floor so you can explain to us what we're gonna be doing here.
Right, the, to put the election of officers on the agenda, you need to add that item to the agenda. Under the state open meetings law, the process for that is that somebody would make a motion to add, say in this case, the election of officers to the agenda. Once that motion is made, then the chairman would call for a public hearing to get any public input on adding the item to the agenda. And then, once that public input, if any, is received, then the commission, the board, would then proceed to vote. And if there's any discussion, you can have the discussion, but then the commission would then proceed to vote on the motion to add the item to the agenda. That vote has to be unanimous to succeed, there can be no opposition to the vote. But if it is added to the agenda, then it would be added in the appropriate place. And I think the chairwoman and I discussed, and it would probably fit under new business, number nine, under new business, to then have the election of officers, and that way, then we would have not only the chairman, but also a vice chairman, so that if Ms. Newberg was unable to be here, then there would be somebody to run the meetings in her stead, so.
And a secretary as well, correct?
And a secretary, yes.
Okay, all right. All right, so I'm gonna try to make this as simple as possible, I, and I can make that motion as the chair, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I will make a motion to add the election of officers for the year twenty-twenty-three to the, to today's agenda, and I need a second for that motion.
I'll second.
All right, we have second by Mr. Marshiv and Mr. Humphrey. Do we have anyone in the chamber that would like to speak as a public hearing comment on the election of the officers? Anybody in the chamber? Okay, seeing none, I think now we're at the point where we can now vote on whether or not to add this to today's agenda, which we have decided, I think I've decided unless y'all are not in agreement, that number, under number nine, under new business, would probably be the best place to pick that up. So if y'all are good with that, then we, we're ready to take a vote. Oh, any questions? This is just to add to the agenda, any questions?
No.
Okay, all right, we're ready to vote, thank you. All right, unanimous vote, six to zero to add it, election of the twenty-twenty-three officers to the agenda under new business number nine. Okay, so that then takes us to the approval of minutes. I'm not, I'm gonna try and make sure I'm not skipping anything here. Approval of minutes, number five on the agenda, do I have a motion for approval of last month's minutes for November thirtieth meeting?
I move that we approve November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two's minutes.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Brown, do we have a second, by Mr. Humphrey? All right, can we vote, please? All right, we have a six to zero vote on approval of the November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two meetings. That then takes us into our scheduled public hearings, which were on agenda item number six, case number twenty-two, twenty-six P., Small Plan Unit Development, otherwise known as a SPUD for Polaris Services LLC. Is there anyone in the chamber to speak on behalf of the applicant as the primary spokesperson that would like to come forward? Okay, Mr. Clark, I see you grabbing your microphone, do you need to get the floor here?
Yes, ma'am, Chair, if you would, please. The Metropolitan Planning Commission received a request from Mr. Don Ricky Wood of Polaris Services LLC on behalf of the applicant for Moose's Tree Service. And this letter, if you will allow me to read it, the letter says, "By this letter, we hereby request a deferral of this case to the January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three PZC public hearing. This request is being made to allow us to have more time for the Neighborhood Participation Plan meeting, submittals for the pre-application conference to be scheduled, and the upcoming holiday time where many will be out of pocket. The deferral will be beneficial to our project as well as the presentation of this small plan unit development to the board. Please let us know what the board decides. Thank you for your assistance with this request, Don Ara Ricky Wood."
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark.
We received this letter, we recommend to the board to defer this case to the January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three meeting.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we defer this.
Okay, hold on, just a second, I think we have to call for opposition, correct, am I correct?
And you can ask if there's anyone.
Yes, okay. Hold that thought just for a second. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak in support of this application? All right, seeing none, do we have anyone here that would like to speak in opposition of this application? Okay, seeing none, board, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we defer case twenty-two dash twenty-six P. to the January twenty-five, twenty-twenty-three PZC public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion, a long motion by Mr. Marshiv to postpone till the January meeting, twenty-twenty-three meeting, this case, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay, we have Mr. Brown and Ms. Hart on seconds. Any discussion? Mr. Clark, I just have a comment. I wanna say that the education that Mr. Jean gave us on this, on PUDs, was very timely and very valuable. I don't know that I would have had the recommendation as someone on this board to ask for postponement in this case, because it, you know, it was a tough case when we looked at this two months ago. And so I hope that we see some success in this. I'm excited to see that this might, this looks like it might be moving forward, both for the, for the community, for the neighbors and, and the applicants, so.
And, and we're very encouraged that this is moving in a positive direction, and the SPUD will allow, and although you received an orientation to SPUDs, we're consistently and always improving the ability that SPUDs have, because we've had one very successful PUD, and that PUD was when the citizens presented the amenities to the applicant, and the applicant agreed to the amenities, so the joint effort between, and that was the original intent of PUDs, where you give ordinance relief in exchange for amenities. And, you know, we get into the, the process of the MPC recommending the amenities, then we totally leave out the, the citizens who are directly impacted by the, our ability to grant this, this relief. So we're very excited about the possibility that these citizens and this applicant, who is a resident of that area, will come together and come up with some real strong and acceptable amenities.
This is good, this is a good out, looks like it's moving to a good outcome, so. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to postpone, we have a second to postpone, any, any other discussion, anybody else want, okay. All right, we're ready to vote then, this is voting to postpone. All right, the case will be postponed until the January twenty-twenty-three meeting. All right, that takes us to case number seven, which is twenty-two four CTAP UDC Code Text Amendment. And is Mr. Walter coming?
May I, may I speak from?
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Clark, I'm sorry.
This, this is a very simple Code Text Amendment, Madam Chair and the board, as I shared with you in the pre-briefing meeting. This is the start of us amending the Caddo Parish Unified Development Code. One of the, the main problems with that code is it had many references to bodies that were part of the city of Shreveport and did not reflect the bodies that were part of the parish of Caddo in the unincorporated areas. So what this Code Text Amendment does is it replaces every reference in this ordinance to the MPC and the ZBA, and it replaces those references with the CPC, the Caddo Parish Planning and Zoning Commission, which, as I said, is the first step in amending the ordinance to make it more reflective, as the citizens had requested, more reflective of life and rural Caddo Parish, and we hope that you could accept our recommendations for this change and recommend this to the Caddo Parish Commission for adoption.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Mr. Clark?
No.
No questions, okay. Do, do I, okay, do we have anybody here in the, in the chamber that would like to speak against this amendment? All right, seeing none, board, what is your preference for a motion here?
I'll go ahead and make the motion. I'll make a motion that we replace the terms Metropolitan Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals with Caddo Parish Planning and Zoning Commission as applicable.
Okay, the motion to approve case number twenty-two four CTAP UDC Code Text Amendment by Mr. Marshiv, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, second by Mr. Humphrey and Ms. Hart. All right, any need for discussion? All right, can we vote? All right, on a six to zero, and that's recommendation for the Code Text Amendment to be approved. All right, that takes us to number eight, old business, we don't have any committee chairs at this point. Mr. Clark, do you have anything you'd like to add in this section, or are we good to move to number nine?
You're ready to move to number nine.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the new business we just added into the agenda, the election of officers for the twenty-twenty-three year. Before we get into the procedure on this, I do have a question for Mr. Bernstein, and I'd just like to get this on the record, Mr. Bernstein. Can you address the, the actual timeframe in which these officers will be elected for the twenty-twenty-three year? We have, just in the last couple meetings drawn slates, we have one member that drew a year, one member drew two years, two members drew three years, and two members that drew four years. We had the question pretty much, it's like, when did, when does that start? Are we starting those years for January one, twenty-twenty-three through December of twenty-twenty-three? Or since this was temporary board for five, six months of this year, what, when does this tenure start, I guess, under these, these lots that we drew?
The, the honest answer is I don't have a definitive answer, but let's go forward, assuming that it is the twenty-twenty-three year. With only there being one member with a one-year term, that will be coming up for, and they will be coming up for reappointment sometime next year anyway. And so it'll be just a matter of timing, and I will make sure to have that answer in time. And I can say that my experience with the parish commission is that if a member, a sitting member on a board wishes to continue to serve, they're gonna be reappointed.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't think the answer will make a difference.
Okay.
In the long term.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna, do we need to discuss on the, on camera and in the open meetings, if we're gonna do this as a from-the-floor vote, or if, excuse me, from-the-floor nomination, or if we're going to do this from a committee recommendation? We didn't really discuss that, so, you and I did not, so.
That's however y'all wish to do it.
Okay, so we need to vote on that, or just, okay, all right, so, most, just do it the normal way, motion, make a motion, or, or just open discussion? I'm not sure how to go forward with this.
Probably, probably the easiest way would be to have call for nominations for chair.
Okay.
And then receiving those, if there's, you know, then, then resolve that issue either by acclamation or by vote. And then call for nominations for vice chair, same process, secretary, same process.
Okay, so are we doing chair today, or, or we are doing chair? Oh, I didn't know that.
Well, to, to go ahead and basically confirm.
Okay. All right, so, all right, do we have, okay, do we have a nomination for chair?
I'll also nominate Lauren Newberg for chair.
Yeah, we second it.
Y'all sure y'all don't want that? All right, we have a, we have a nomination on the floor to nominate Lauren Newberg as chair for the year twenty-twenty-three, and a second by Jake Brown, it's weird talking about yourself in third person. Do we have any need for discussion? Okay, are we ready to vote? Okay.
Yes.
Ready to vote, all right. All right, we have a six to zero vote for Lauren Newberg as chair for year twenty-twenty-three. So then I think we're gonna move now to the nomination for the vice chair. Do we have a nomination on the floor for vice chair? I'll make a nomination for vice chair for Lauren Marshiv, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have several seconds for Mr. Marshiv. All right, any need for discussion? All right, we're ready to vote. All right, we have a six to zero in favor of Mr. Marshiv as, as the vice chair, congratulations, Mr. Marshiv.
Thank you.
And then that takes us to the position of secretary. Do we have a motion on the floor for a nomination for secretary?
I'll nominate Phyllis Hart.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to nominate Ms. Phyllis Hart for secretary, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown and Ms. Humphrey, I'm Mr. Humphrey, I'm sorry. Apologize, but can we vote, please, or no need for discussion?
No.
Okay, all right. All right, a six to zero for Ms. Hart to be, to serve as the secretary for the year twenty-twenty-three. All right, congratulations, Ms. Hart. All right, so I think then it takes us into agenda item number ten, other matters to be, to be reviewed by the commission. We have a director's report on here as well as public comments, so, Mr. Clark, we'll start with you.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and congratulations to all of the officers, and congratulations to the board. We look forward to working with you in the year twenty-twenty-three. We're very excited about the possibilities that are lying out there, some of the things that we can do, some of the things that we will do. And basically, not to prolong this meeting, this will probably be the shortest meeting we ever will have, but I just wanted to wish each one of you the happiest of New Years and looking forward to seeing you in twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Do we have any comments? You need something, Ms. Humphrey?
No, no.
Okay, do we have any comments from anybody in the public that would like to come forward and speak to the, to the board for any reason? That's next on our agenda, okay, I don't see anybody. All right, so it takes us to number eleven, which is the chair and the board members' comments. I would just like to say again, congratulations to Ms. Hart and Mr. Marshiv and to the other board members, and I thank you very much. I know what a commitment it is, you know, to volunteer to do this, and, and I thank you for coming each, each month and, and helping to carry out the business work for the parish. I would also like to reiterate what was discussed in the, in the work session. If you have not completed your ethics training for twenty-twenty-three and you have not done your financial disclosure, because we have two new members, everybody just needs to check and make sure those things are up in the portal, and make sure that Ms. Sherry gets a copy of that for her records, okay? And if you haven't done that training, it pretty much guides you, it'll tell you at the end to print a copy for your records, and then same thing with the disclosure. If you have any questions, I'm sure, Ms. Sherry, you can help on mine, so you can reach out to Ms. Sherry. Is there any other comments from anybody, Mr. Marshiv, you have anything as vice chair?
Other than, it's been a good year, and I've enjoyed working with the board members.
Good, Mr. Humphrey, you have any, any comments?
I just wanted to say that I'm grateful to be a part of this board, and I think we've got a great board, and we look forward to the year, ensuing year.
Thank you.
Working for the parish.
Mr. Bernstein, I have a question for you. Are we gonna be re, are we gonna play musical chairs at the next meeting? They'll be re, they'll be adjusted accordingly, right? So the, sis.
That's, that's something that we take responsibility.
I just wanna make sure, so they'll know when they come in, they'll be sitting in.
We'll have the officers on either side and the board members going in the other, the remaining seats.
Okay, I just wanted to, I, I've seen that happen, and it confuses people, so I just wanted to make the comment. Ms. Hart, you have anything you wanna say? I mean, twenty, we're, I'd close out twenty-twenty-two, so.
Yes, I would like to say it's been a pleasure working with the board and hope to continue to work with the board. I have learned a lot of things, and I appreciate it being nominated, and I appreciate the board members that I have, now that we have really grown and listened to everybody's opinion. It's been very nice, very educational.
Thank you.
And I'm looking forward to twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you. Ms. Green?
Great, great, great. There is something that I depict from the scriptures as a servant. So I'm here to serve the best that I can for the community and the parish and the persons of this great, and I like to include it all, Shreveport, Louisiana, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Mr. Brown?
Yes, I'm, I'm happy to be appointed, and I'm actually looking forward to us digging in and working on this master plan and getting us a set of codes that reflects the, the people of the five-mile zone of Caddo Parish.
And, and then I'll close by saying, this can be a very difficult process as board members, and I don't take for granted any, any meeting that we have, when we come in here, things are ready, the cases are, they're intact, they're easy to read, the work that the MPC staff does for us is, is great, great work. So I want to thank you, Mr. Clark, and your staff for always having things in order for us. us. It was a tough year to start out, you know, you were here with us, we struggled for the first five months just to get out of the chute, and we're a new board, and we're, we're excited about doing things for the community and, and making our community happy. We want to do some things that make them happy, and we want to be part of, of that, that happiness and, and, and quite basically just quality of life for people, good quality of life for people in Caddo, Shreveport. So thank you to your staff.
Thank you.
For the, for the diligence and the good work that you guys do. And, Mr. Bernstein, you as well, you've, you've been a great bit of information for us, and we, kind of, we're in uncharted territory here this year, so I appreciate you digging in and, and having answers for us on things that were, you know, just new, new areas for all of us, so.
Legal matters.
Legal matters, yeah, there, thank you. All right, having said that, I, I don't think there's anything else unless Mr. Jordan would like to make a comment on anything.
I see him over there.
I don't have a comment, I want to wish y'all a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, can't wait to be working with y'all in twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
All right.
Thank you. All right, so I think that is probably gonna be the shortest meeting we'll ever see, it is three thirty-five, if my eyes are correct, and so do we have a motion?
I'll move that we adjourn.
Mr. Marshiv says it's time to go, he motions to adjourn.
I'll say another motion.
Thank you very much.
All right, y'all enjoy.
Yes.
Happy New Year.
Yes.
Have a great year.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. You have a prosperous New Year.
I can give you a tip if my charge is, uh.
Absolutely.
Oh, you gotta make.
Fantastic.
No, until I get it, actually give it to him and not put it in the draft.
Oh, okay.